I didn't know.
I think they're going to boost my hearing.
Awesome.
So we second.
One second.
Hey Grace, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Perfect, thank you.
Like the call that this meeting of the Madison Public Schools Board of Education to order. And that will rise for the pledge of allegiance closest places in there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, no deviation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, so first item up is our school slash community session, which includes public participation. Is there anybody in here who would like to speak? If not, is there anyone online? That would like to speak? All right, we do have some rules if we have someone.
We do.
Yeah.
So we, the board welcomes public comment at our meetings when asked. When speaking, we ask that you state your name and address. Comments are limited to three minutes. Board meetings such as tonight's is not a time for discussion, so it shouldn't be expected that the administration or board will respond. If necessary, the member of the public will hold it separately. So our person online has raised their hands. You can go ahead and speak.
Okay, sorry, I'm not sure if you can see me or not, but hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Cheryl Chiat. I live at ninety Sandalwood Drive in Madison. And I was just wanting to express my concern at the early start time of the high school. With, you know, after maybe all the research that has been done, let's say the last. So that the later start times are very much beneficial to teenagers, not just academically, but better moods. Their circadian clocks, I guess, through puberty change so that they can't fall asleep as early. So it's not just as simple as saying, well, they can go to bed earlier. There have been so many, a few states like specifically that have changed start times and pass laws such as California and Florida in twenty twenty-three. The American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as the American Psychological Association also supports a pushback. They actually recommend eight thirty, which I think obviously is very late considering Daniel Hand, I believe starts at seven twenty now. So I'm not suggesting to be that far back by any stretch, but just something to consider. And I was trying to look at some of the towns in Connecticut to kind of get an idea where the start times are. Staples in Westport, for example, eight AM, New Canaan High School, eight AM. Wilton High School, eight twenty. So then I started to look a little more in our area. And I found Westbrook High School, seven fifty. Branford High School, eight twenty-five. Old Saybrook in twenty twenty-two moved from seven thirty to eight AM start time. Even Guilford is a little later at seven forty. So I don't know, I was just seeing this trend and just wanted to comment because I think it's highly beneficial. I think seven twenty is super, super early for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah.
And is there anyone in public who'd like to speak at this time?
Next, we have the Board of Ed Student Representatives Report. And we have Grace with us online.
Hello. Hi, guys. I'm currently at a Madison Youth and Family Service meeting that started at seven. So Mr. Sally Terry and I discussed and we thought that I could pop on for Zoom and then get back to the meeting since the Board of Ed is the only one that offers the Zoom. And Brooke got the location wrong, so she was at town campus, but she's driving over, so that's where she is right now. But I have the report, so the first thing is junior awards took place last week. And that was around twenty students got recognized with various book awards, girl state, different STEM honors, science, technology, math, engineering. So that was a really special event. It was quite informal, given that it was just taking place in the counseling office during the day. But they try and make the senior awards ceremony more special, so that's coming up. Most students attend and there are various awards there. They're a lot more diverse at the senior awards, such as athletic awards, academic awards, whereas junior awards are mostly leadership and book awards. But nonetheless, very special for those recipients. And then we have our trimester three exams coming up on Thursday, which is incredible that we're almost done with the school year. But we'll have periods one and two on Thursday, three and four on Friday, and then five and six on Monday of next week. And the seniors are going to take them a little earlier with earlier start times, but the same days. And then senior prom took place last Saturday. It was a very successful event. People really like Anthony's as a venue. They said the food was good, the DJ was great. And that's actually a past Daniel Hand student, so that's nice to see them bringing their talents back. And then there's just a lot of senior events coming up. Obviously, we have graduation, which the speakers are very excited for. And I think the class of twenty twenty-five is looking forward to. There's the cap and gown distribution that's taking place this week. An elementary school walk where they walk through their elementary schools. And it's particularly special this year because of the schools that are getting taken down. So the, this is kind of like the last year that we'll get to go to all of their elementary schools. And then new class officers were elected last week. It was a very competitive year this year, around fifteen students per grade and only eight can be elected. But we're excited to see a new group of leadership enter hand. And then there's a new Board of Ed rep who we're so excited about, Kate Rizzo. So I believe she's there tonight. And then on Thursday, there's the Summer Palooza, and that's taking place after school. It's a really fun event that Hand puts on, and there's food and drinks and games to kind of celebrate wrapping up the end of the year. It was a huge success last year with some students even coming home, coming back from home just to attend. They do like water slides, things like that, lots of pizza, so I encourage students to get out there. And then lastly, our sports teams are doing very well this spring with softball, lacrosse teams, track, tennis teams, golf teams, all qualifying for states, and they all have competing events, some of which are taking place at home, some of which are away. But we're definitely having a successful spring sports season. And that's all I have.
Again, sorry for my delayed entrance. I went to the wrong place. But Grace has been talking about all of the underclassmen and juniors that they've been up to. Past Saturday was senior prom, and I might be biased, but I think it was a lot more fun than junior prom was. The venue was better, the food was better. Everyone had like a great time. I was watching around, like the energy was just up. So it was a really great event, and I recommend anyone who is on the edge of going to prom, definitely go, definitely go. And now next week, we have a ton going on. So on Monday is the cap and gown distributions. And then right afterwards, we are heading to the elementary schools to get a walkthrough. We're going to be celebrated by all the little elementary school kids. We're going to talk to our former teachers and faculty. And I don't think they've done this in the past, so this is like really special and I've like seen it around, like my friends doing it. And I think it's like a great way to like get all the memories back in, reminisce on everything. The nostalgia is probably going to go be crazy. But that's going to be a really great day on Monday. On Tuesday, we have our senior awards night at six PM. We got our invitations a couple of days ago, but this is where all the community comes together and celebrates the hardworking seniors and how much they've done throughout the year, not just this year, their whole high school careers, academically, extracurricular wise, at community. And I think it's a great way just to bring everyone together for this big event. I'm glad that we do it in this fashion set, just like handing out the awards through the mail or something like this, something else. I think it's a great way to really truly take a moment to celebrate everything that we've worked towards. On Wednesday is our senior brunch at Amorante's. I think that's what it's called in New Haven. It's a really great venue again. I believe it's by the water. Another just time to blast hurrah, bring everyone together, talk with everyone. We have a great senior class who really bonds together, so I think it's going to be a great event. And this is all leading up to the big day, graduation on Thursday at six PM, followed by night out of hand. And this is, I think, I, I might be biased, so I feel like night out in hand might be better than night in hand because we got bowling, we got arcade. And we're going to have so many activities going on. Like I think I'll be up all night. I don't think I'll go to, go to bed, but we'll see. And then after that, we can wrap, wrap it up. I'm no, no longer a Mass and Public Schools student, which is crazy. But it's going to be a great last hurrah that last week. So that is everything that is going on around here. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a lot.
Any questions?
Grace is raising her hand.
Oh, yes, Grace.
Sorry, before I go, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the board and Brooke for being an incredible co-rep. I really appreciate this position. And Brooke and I were talking about how we've been very involved in the school and how we see how things go on. But getting the opportunity to see the backend and all the hard work everybody puts on to make this possible has been a really special experience. So I really appreciate that, and I look forward to returning next year.
Well, thank you. And I was actually just going to do some thanking myself. Grace, of course, you're the new Brooke. And Kate, who will meet in a, in a little bit, is going to be the new Grace. And so it turns, and so it turns, so on and so on. Brooke, thank you so much for your awesome representation on the board. You always came prepared, and you and Grace both always came prepared and shared a lot of important information with the board and helped us to understand how the students view things. And I know that you, in particular, have been very busy earning all kinds of awards and accolades this year. So we feel especially privileged that you were able to deign to, to share your presence with us. I say that jokingly, but seriously, thank you very much. We greatly appreciate everything you've done and we wish you the best moving forward with the college that William and Mary it is. Awesome. Congratulations.
No, it's been a pleasure. Every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, I'm excited to come down here. Chat with all you before. It's a cool, it's a really cool experience, actually. So you'll, you'll enjoy it. Don't worry. All right.
Brooke, I just want to echo, you know, you've been a, a great rep. I often have board members tell me that the highlight of the meeting is the student presentation, student reports. And I, I agree with them. It is for me as well. And to hear firsthand what's going on at the, the high school from. It's been, been great over the, the past two years. So I, I thank you. You know, it's, it's not easy, you know, when every, every other week, you know, to come to a meeting at, at night when you have so much going on and, and you are so busy reading your information. You know, again, it's just like, it's incredible, everything that you squeezed into the high school experience. So I congratulate you, wish you the best, and hope you come back and let us know how things are going. But, um, you know, it's great dedication. We thank you so much. And Grace, we're, we're thrilled. We have an Ackerman again, you know, for one more year. You know, it's a longstanding tradition, so.
It'll be four years.
Yeah, it's good. It will be great to have you back and thank you for everything you do for Mass and Youth Family Services and, and high school as, as well. It's, like I said, great to have you back next year.
Thank you.
We have a small gift on behalf of the Board of Education. It's not a Starbucks gift card. It doesn't sound like you need anything. We, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brooke.
Get to take your name tag. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll see you Thursday.
See you Thursday night. It's been awesome. It really has.
Bye.
All right, next item up for Vids is Superintendent's Report, Dr. Cook.
So one of the things that makes my job easier is the amazing student reps. And they shared really, you know, a lot of the things that I wanted to say. Oftentimes, I bring a long list of things to share and, and I mark them off as they go through it. So I was going to talk about prom. I was going to talk about athletic success, the events going on at the, the schools, and especially the senior walkthroughs. So I want to thank all the principals for their flexibility on that staff. We even got to the point where we thought this through so much that we have our staff members who were part of Island Ave, going back to Island Ave, you know, from our, our current schools, so students see familiar faces as they go through OLM. Thank you to OLM for being flexible and allowing our students to go through, so that students on Monday will get their cap and gowns. They will get board buses to the three different schools and walk through. And I think it's a great event. Ms. Dallin Hetch and I have been part of that in our previous districts and are thrilled to be able to do it. And like, like I said, it's a, you know, unique event for us here in Madison as Ryerson and Jeffrey are, are, are closing. I want to congratulate Principal Spooner and Principal Frost on, on just really different, because I think the schools are going through different changes, but wonderful ceremonies that they held. Friday was Jeffrey's. Today was, was Ryerson, just really perfect ceremonies, I think, that celebrated the schools. You know, today was Ryerson, which is a unique event because the school is, is truly closing. And we, we, we believe it won't be operating as a building, you know, for very long. And so Ms. Spooner went to, you know, a lot of thought in who she invited and the events that she had. The students were phenomenal. Their stuff, student. You know, singing and, and it's just really, really great. Thank you for Chairman Klasinski and and sorry. Emily Rosenfeld. I was trying to think if somebody else was there, but it was just that morning. Seth for joining us today, and that was, that was really great for, for you to be here. So if that was pretty much my, my report, as I said, the students took a lot of the information that I wanted to share. We do, as always the case, in June, we have a new student representation representative being announced. So Kate Rizzo, as was shared, Chairman Klasinski was part of that selection process. So we asked him to read what the high school had provided as he shared the high school has a lot going on this night, this evening. So they're attending other events right now.
Okay, so I would like to welcome Kate Rizzo, who is a committed leader, ready to represent her peers to our meeting tonight, to kind of induct you as our next Grace, our next junior student rep who will follow for two years. And according to the high school biography here, Kate Rizzo, a dedicated and passionate student at Daniel Hand High School, is eager to serve as the student representative on the Board of Education, a role she views as unique, as a unique opportunity to deepen her connection with faculty and the greater Madison community. With a strong foundation in leadership and a clear vision for advocacy, Kate brings both experience and empathy to the table. Throughout her time at Daniel Hand High School, Kate has assumed numerous leadership roles, including serving as a class officer, co-president of Girls United, a peer advocate, and an active member of Habitat for Humanity. Her engagement extends beyond titles. Kate has attended leadership conferences, including the CAS, the Connecticut Association of Schools Leadership Conference at Southern Connecticut State University, and the three-day Ryla Conference, which is the Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. She even led a workshop at the Shoreline Girls Leadership Conference run by Shoreline Girls United. She is also a member of the Daniel Hand Girls Soccer and Girls Lacrosse Teams. These collective experiences have equipped her with essential communication and listening skills, which she's, which she sees as critical tools for effective representation. Kate's motivation to join the board is rooted in a deep commitment to student voice and well-being. She believes that having a student's perspective is essential in shaping academic and social policies that reflect the real needs of her peers. She wants to ensure that all students feel safe, heard, and valued, regardless of whether it's related to curriculum, athletics, clubs, or social dynamics. Quote, "I want to be a leader for those who may feel they cannot be one for themselves," she says, underscoring her dedication to inclusivity and empowerment. Underscoring her dedication to inclusivity and empowerment. Known for her organizational skills and her ability to balance rigorous academic and extracurricular commitments. Kate is fully prepared for the responsibilities of uh the position entails. She recognizes the time and energy required and is ready to prioritize her role as a representative. Ensuring the board meets uh meetings receive her full attention and dedication. And like I pointed out during the meeting, uh when we selected you, um if you want something done, give it to a busy person to do. So we assume you're very good at managing and budgeting your time, uh and we look forward to to your presence at the meetings. In short, Kate Rizzo is not only ready to represent her school, she's determined to be its voice, its advocate. And its bridge to a better, more inclusive future. Her drive, experience, and compassion will make her an outstanding Board of Education student representative. Thank you so much for applying, um having been on the committee to help select you, I was very impressed. There was a large pool of very qualified uh students, peers of yours, who were interested in it. Um so it's i- it was no small feat for you, your uh application to rise above. Um and for you to be selected, and we really look forward to your um impressions and um your opinions. And what you share with the board over the next couple of years. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. Um final item tonight, we have a very special staff recognition. Um so Larry Bernret um had approached um Zoe Roos and myself about a month ago. And he told us that this staff recognition had to remain confidential, and so when Larry tells you that, you you keep it confidential. And so we have, we have done that, it has not been easy. Um Larry is a a good friend of the district and um supports us tremendously throughout the year. Especially in uh Veterans Day and Memorial Day events, and so I'm very excited to bring Larry forward to present this recognition.
Well, thank you, Dr. Brooke and uh Mr. Chairman. Those who don't know me, I'm Larry Bernret. I am the former board member, parent. And had four kids go through the school system. Uh I am now the commander, Americanist, I guess it's getting to be, of the V F W post here in Madison. Uh I was just informed the other day that our post is getting an All-State Award as one of the top posts in the state. For the second time. So uh that that speaks well because there uh most of the staff sitting on my left here know me. But uh we are in all the schools. And uh between Memorial Day, Veterans Day, uh student essays. Uh also, I work with the Legion here in town, Donna Farrell, and the Legion and the V F W. This is a unique town because I've seen posts in other towns, I won't name, that uh don't have any relationship with the school system. And they're big towns, big towns, Milford being one, but let's not say I said that. Cause I'm a good friend of him. So uh tonight I have a very unusual duty. Uh once a year, our post, unique to us. Has a special award that we call the Americanism Award. This award actually goes back to Academy School. Regina Birdsell. And how all these school events start back in the days of Academy and Island. Uh Regina got the first award, the principal island got another award. And more recently, the principal of Brown School got this award. And I don't remember here to tell anything about what the award is because I'm gonna keep that secret till the end. The person who is the recipient of the award is someone that we have noticed in our travels. Who displays very, very good. Americanism type things, recognizes parents, veterans, has students bring their parents and grandparents to the school. And if you were at uh at Jeffrey, uh the Friday before Memorial Day. You saw an audience of about forty veterans. So that kind of thing goes on in the schools. And we hope uh that will go on in the new school also. So the recipient of this award is usually someone that we decide uh like Regina Birdsell and others. Uh are demonstrating qualities that we feel demonstrate the Americanism award. Now I'm gonna get official. Once the hat goes on, we're official. Recipient this year is someone in our school system who uh really displays the great awards. And uh I am very pleased to present this award to none other than Catherine Hart. Lone Eagle. We chose the eagle because that represents America.
That's wonderful. Thank you so so much.
There's some instructions to go with it.
There are?
You have to get with Frank Henshaw, and he will show you how to display it properly.
I will, I will take my advice from Frank.
Because she's seen it in Brown School.
Absolutely.
And he will show you exactly what to do.
All right, I will talk to Frank. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, it's the fact he's a fan while you're putting away that. The box, um Larry, thank you so much for everything that the guys do. Um you know, school districts in Connecticut have a choice to either take the day off. Um or to have veteran uh veterans uh related program on Veterans Day. And thanks to your help and um all of the enthusiastic um volunteerism by your group. Uh we always have amazing programs at our schools. And um I remember my daughters were always impressed and came to talk about what happened during these, you know.
Behind that was uh when the state decided to make Veterans Day a school day. Uh I was approached by a person from the Legion and he said, why don't we just go before then the board and talk about it? And it was actually the Board of Ed that convinced us to go do it in the schools. And I think it's much better to do it on the day in the schools than you saw Memorial Day is the day off. And yeah, we have the parade and I get to make another speech and all that good stuff, but uh I think the kids get more out of it on Veterans Day.
It's been a tremendous partnership. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Catherine. Well observed. Um Catherine warrants a beautiful Veterans Day ceremony. And always uh does a great job recognizing recognizing her veterans and has great attendance and it really means a lot to students, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have board member comments. Any comments from the board? Um and I know we have Maureen online, any comments, Maureen? Okay, I would just like to comment quickly that um I was fortunate to attend uh the Ryerson program this morning. Trying to sneak out. Yeah, um. Ryerson School has been so special and and it. It's been here for a long time, but especially in recent years uh under your leadership, uh Kelly, it's been tremendous. And we've had such positive feedback about your program, about the school. Um and people just love being part of it, so we are very happy. It it's it's bittersweet, we're closing a school, but we're very happy that you will be leading the transition to Brown. Um and that all the students will travel together uh to Brown, and we're so excited about the new shape uh and form that Brown has taken to the building. And all the upgrades and um and work that's been done there. Um and we are sure that it's gonna be a fantastic um transition. And it's gonna be another amazing educational community, and we look forward to you and Frank Lee to get together.
Thank you so much. If I could just say just a few things that I said today in the um final bell ceremony. Is just wholeheartedly thank you so much um to the Board of Education for entrusting me in these last sixteen years. To serve Ryerson Elementary School. It truly has been the privilege of my life. Um I'm so honored. This is an amazing community, uh both the educators, the parents, the students, uh it's been a joy. And I, while it is bittersweet for sure, um I'm so excited at the next chapter. There's so many, there's so much more greatness ahead of us, um and I have an awesome partner. I mean, I cannot wait. Um and and all the staff who are there, uh and the children are so excited. While today we closed the day with children telling me that um the fun fair, uh which was a tradition that started in the eighties. Um at Ryerson School was the greatest day of their lives. I can't wait for those uh sentiments to continue as we start the next chapter of Brown Elementary School. So truly, thank you so much. It's been an honor. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, uh any audience response to information presented so far? Won't see any audience either online or in-house, so I'm gonna assume that's a no. Um and now we move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Emily? And do I have a second? Thank you. Um any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, uh the five, nothing, thank you. Number nine, uh we've got our board committee and liaison updates, beginning with curriculum and student development, Stephen.
Yes, we met yesterday. Um it really was a remarkable meeting. Throughout the meeting and certainly after the meeting, I wish every single board member could have been there because uh it was profound in many ways. Uh agenda was uh curriculum unit adoptions. Which is a culmination of a great deal of work by a whole host of people, teachers and administrators. The presenter was Michelle Horn, um who was really in the position that was shifted and designed this year. To coordinate the curriculum work. It was all part, obviously, of Gail's ongoing work. Over several years in terms of building this culture of empowering teachers. And having them own and develop uh curriculum in a very pointed way. So the presentation covered the curriculum revisions and additions for twenty-four different courses. In the areas of uh career and tech ed, science, theater, and world language. Uh the bulk of it in the area of science. The opening remarks highlighted the guiding principle of curriculum development. Um that just knocked me out right from the beginning when I was going through the materials. Our curriculum isn't just about what students learn, it's about who they become. And you know, when I saw that as the guiding principle before I went through pages upon pages of pages of the curriculum. Revisions and development, you know, I looked at it from, okay, well, let's see if all of this work holds true. To that guiding um principle. It was further explained that the units are backward designed to align learning experiences and performance assessments. With the capacities. Uh I would underscore emphasis is on real-world application, interdisciplinary learning. And student agency. Learning is not just about content mastery, but about developing the skills, habits, and mindsets. Students need to thrive. And then as the teacher representatives went through each item. Uh within the curriculum, what came through very clearly is these. One in their in their beliefs, but in terms of the lessons, the units, the experiences. That they designed for students, it was, it really was truly amazing. In career and tech ed, there were revisions to the entrepreneurship course. And a new course, investment analysis, is creating a new career pathway called insurance, securities, and investments. In science, and the bulk of the meeting was around the science curriculum K through twelve. In science, the revisions vertically align the units and anchor to the next generation science standards. Performance expectations. Each grade level builds on the previous, promoting deep transferable, transferable understanding. Early grades emphasize observable phenomena and essential science practices. In the K five science revision, the comprehensive review of materials and resources was conducted. To ensure all students are equipped for active learning. Uh again, underscored, there's an emphasis on engaging, hands-on science experience. Integration of play-based learning to support exploration and discovery. You know, and a part of this process was the teachers developed. Were science kits to be distributed to classrooms and in addition to having, and you know, and if you're in central office, you can see a wall. Um you know, four or five canisters deep. Um but they set up a system to make sure that those kits aren't depleted and that there's a structure for. Uh replenishing the materials and supplies. Science six through eight revised again to align with the N G S S. The department focused lessons to be student-centered, valuing student critical thinking skills and problem solving. This is a phenomenon phenomenon centered focus where students ex- attempt to explain the science behind. A real-life scenario. This comprised a shift from traditional lecture-based learning to active phenomenon-driven investigations. You know, I'm covering a lot of material and, you know, quite frankly, I really encourage board members to at least. Plum through the specifics that are attached to all these in terms of the nature of the lessons and activities. Because, you know, the the members that were there, Seth can speak to it, and others. Um we looked at it and we said, the kids are going to love this, you know, I mean, it just, it was beautiful. Again, science nine through twelve uh involve rearranging topics between units and improving sequence and refined alignment. That was the curriculum part. I mean, there literally were fifty-seven. Teachers that have worked on this project over months and months. Anyone who was in the room couldn't help but be impacted by their enthusiasm, their excitement, their pride. They, you know, many times I said, we can't wait to teach these things to the kids. The entire presentation really was a testament to what happens when teachers are empowered and guided. In developing world-class learning experiences that undoubtedly account for the continuing success. Success that we see in our students. I mean, I literally going through the curriculum. Uh it brought me to tears in terms of the shift and the focus on the level of teacher investment understanding. And then, of course, the culminating feeling was, you know, this is Gail's work. This is, I mean, it was so clear that this culture is embedded and structured. And designed to be sustaining and continuing, particularly, you know, in her elevating of Michelle. And you know, my comments to Gail was, I mean, this is, I mean, so many people aspire to this kind of outcome. Among their faculty, and you rarely see it. I mean, it really just, you know, it knocked me out, so I urge people to go in and go deeper into the materials that are part of the packet. To get your own sense because it really is something quite extraordinary.
Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Stephen. Any questions for Steve? Maureen. Um I was just gonna comment that uh having been at that meeting and experiencing it firsthand. After reading the materials in advance of the meeting to prepare. Um the one thing I was gonna add, which I thought you weren't gonna add, but then you did touch on it, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna underscore it. Um to be in that room and to watch the teachers who were involved delivering their impassioned. Presentation about what they had done over the several months. Um really. Was amazing and and you know, I welled up a bit at times, you know, watching the presentation, particularly. Uh in science because it did focus more on science. And I think um we have some, some good things ahead of us as a district. Um in terms of NGSS progress and and doing well um in science because. Um the work that they're doing is amazing. Um and the one thing that I'd also like to add is. One of the things that they had to review, especially in the science curriculum, is they had to map backwards, as you said. From the NGSS standards uh for performance and um the way that they did it. Was not just a rote, we need to, the the kids need to know this on the test, so we're gonna teach them this in this unit at this time. It was way more encompassing than that. And it also had to line up and map back up to our mission. And our uh profiles, profile of a graduate. So um you know, they had two different things to map to. Um and they did it superbly and then adding the hands-on, you know, every kid is a scientist aspect was amazing. And to the point where um even though you have to practically take account of the fact that. Um there is an assessment and we need to prepare kids for an assessment. Um you know, I'd like to, you know, I pointed out, I wanna almost coin a new phrase. Instead of teaching to the test, which a lot of um districts have come to do in this era of high test. Uh of high um stakes testing, um we teach despite the test. You know, we figure out what the test needs and then we expand holistically well beyond that. And it's, it's gonna be to our kids lifelong benefit. And um it was amazing that the presentation. And the amount of effort and enthusiasm that our um our teachers take. So. And thanks for leaving it, Gail, and thanks to Michelle Israel for helping me to be there. Thank you.
You know, one of, one of those remarks you made in the meeting is. The video from that curriculum committee meeting. Should be kept and periodically presented to the board, particularly if the board changes or whatever. When you wanted to look at. What is the curriculum development process in Madison and what is the power of it? There would be no better example than that presentation by that group of teachers.
And Craig, thanks for also helping to make sure that we're always budgeting to allow that to happen. Because that's the magic in this district. It really is. And you recognize it and. Um you know, feels good as a board member doing that work and supporting it.
End of report.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Okay, um facilities committee, Emily.
Fortunately, we have not met because that's a tough act to follow, nothing else. Um sorry, no report.
Okay, thank you. Finance committee, we have not met. Okay, thank you. Personnel committee, Maureen.
Great, I get to go after Steve. The uh the personnel committee met on May twenty-ninth because negotiations are underway for the UP Soon Nurses Union contract. We have our next meeting scheduled for June twenty-fifth. And we also have later in the agenda. Um on the agenda, we're going to discuss and possibly take action on the MACE contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy committee, Diane couldn't be here this evening, but um.
I don't, I don't think we've met.
You, oh, they haven't met. That's right. I forget. Okay. Nothing new there. Uh Learn Liaison, uh Mary Ann couldn't be here this evening. Um but she informed me in advance that they have not yet met. Um so she wouldn't have had a report at this meeting anyway. Uh so um moving on now to item ten. To discuss and take possible action on the Madison Association of Educational Support, Cert, Supportive Services. MACE Collective Bargaining Agreement, uh which would cover the years uh the, the term. Seven, one, twenty, twenty-five through six, thirty, twenty, twenty-eight. Um so we have to discuss this in potentially an executive session and then come out and vote on it.
So I, I would suggest if um possible, I, I know the board has received, there's not a lot of changes to the contract. Um and I don't believe we need to go in an executive session unless there's a question a board member would like to ask um in executive session. If um if you want, if you do have a question, please ask it. Heather Dobson, our HR director is with us. Heather or Maureen um or somebody else from the committee could most likely um answer it. But I, I know several of you were part of the negotiation, so I think we could avoid um executive session if everyone's comfortable with that.
So in other words, if anyone has a question, let us know and we could go into executive session if not. And if you feel comfortable, having reviewed the materials, um then we just will dispense with this motion to enter executive session. And we can go directly to the uh to the vote on the contract itself. No questions? I know Maureen doesn't have any questions there. All right, uh so let's dispense with executive session. And I would um entertain a motion to approve the Madison Association of Educational Supportive Services. MACE Collective Bargaining Agreement for the term of July first, twenty, twenty-five. Through June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-eight. Do I have a motion? Uh I'm gonna, I'm gonna take Maureen's because she's the chair of the committee. I'll take the second by Emily. Any discussion?
Thank, thank you to the committee.
Thank you. Thank you to Heather Dobson for all her work.
Thank you to Heather. Thank you to the committee and thank you to the union. Uh we, we really feel like we have a good result there, so. Um any further question, I mean, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, nay. Any extensions? Motion carries. Five to nothing. Thank you. Action item eleven. I need a motion to approve a donation to Paulson Middle School from the Paulson PTO. In the amount of two thousand dollars to help fund the great eight, grade eight Holiday Hill Field Trip. Stephen, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Emily, thank you. Any questions? We have the information in our packet. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, I. All opposed, nay. Any extensions? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you very much as usual to the Paulson PTO. Action item twelve. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty, twenty-five Board of Education uh meeting.
So moved.
Emily, do I have a second? So Stephen. Uh any recommended edits, questions, concerns? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you. Any requests for future agenda items? Going once, going twice. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Emily, do I have a second? I'll second. We'll be gay later at eight nineteen E M. All in favor, I. All opposed, nay. Any extensions? Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you all.